If everybody would take their place. At this time, we will call the meeting to order and let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Turman to give our implication and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we love you today and we're thankful, God, for this privilege that we have to be able to come into this chamber and do the work of the county. I pray you'd touch each and every one of us, let our minds and hearts be the way that you'd have it to be. And I pray, God, that you continue to bless our county and continue to lead us in the right direction. And, Lord, just keep your hand upon us, we pray. We'll ask all of this in the lovely name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here today as we conduct the busy business of Covington County. I appreciate our news media being here. I see Analogy Store News and Hot News are both represented and we appreciate y'all being here. At this time, we need to adopt the official agenda. I would like to recommend that we delete item number nine because we do not have that information. Our attorney will be attending the meeting today to further do that. Also, to delete the maintenance contract for Central Inc., there's some questions. Ms. Sawal has said that we need some questions answered on that. And also delete the budget amendments. We are not prepared to go forward at this time. Do I have a motion that we adopt this agenda with these three items deleted?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
We have a motion to sign to adopt this agenda with these three items deleted. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will hear comments from our public officials. We have our sheriff, Mr. Dennis Meeks here. Dennis, would you like to address the commission? I think I saw Judge Ben Bowden come in. You'd like to address us?
Yeah, just one informal report if I could. We have made some cosmetic changes over at the probate office that you may not be aware of. The biggest one is the, we completely redid the vault area and made it more user friendly and where you can work good in there. And I invite each of you to go by and take a look at it if you haven't. And then we have gone and taken out some swinging doors that were sort of an impediment to handicap folks getting in and out of our office. And we took those down and that has really made a big difference. And I'm kind of embarrassed I hadn't thought of doing that a long time ago. But, you know, they've been there forever and you hate to, you know, make a lot of changes. And then we've made some purchases for the seating in there that makes it a little more comfortable for folks who are waiting. Sometimes we have elderly and handicap folks. And a couple of things I wanted to say about it real quick. One, I hope you'll come take a look at it. Two, most of that is made possible by Kevin and his team who do the work. And every time we have an idea, they kind of expand on it and make it even better than what we originally thought. So I appreciate Kevin and his team. They really do a good job. And then, as far as I know, most of that's paid for out of probate judge indexing fund. I don't think we brought a bill yet. And it's little stuff, but it's designed to make the office more appealable and more user friendly for the public. And so I just wanted to let you know about it and ask you to come take a look at it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. I think that's all of our elected officials. At this time, we will hear from Mr. Mike Brown, the executive director of the American Red Cross.
Oh, Mr. Brown has a presentation for Ms. Janice Castleberry. Ms. Janice is on her way. I've spoken with her and she's not here yet. If we could postpone this until Ms. Janice Castleberry gets here, that would be great.
Is it unanimous consent that we put this item down later in?
Thank you for that. And when she comes in, we can insert it anywhere. It's okay with that.
With that being, we have no old business. We'll go into our new business. The first item is consider the approval of the payroll and accounts payable from May two thousand and fifteen. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I make a motion we approve these accounts.
Second.
Mr. Turman, second. Any question? Ms. Sawal, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider alcohol license for Cypress Landing RV park. We received the request. We are to make a recommendation to the ABC board. Is it approved, disapproved? We'll call it for a halt right now and we'll go back up to Ms. Janice. We ready for you to make your presentation.
Thanks for having me today. And I'd like to start by thanking the commission for the support of the Red Cross. You guys provide us with a terrific office space here and support assistance in general. If it weren't for organizations like the commission here, we would not be able to provide our services. So thank you for what you do. The last time I was here, I was talking about a new structural change that we had had at the Red Cross. And I wanted to report today, first of all, that it's going very well in Covington County. The Red Cross is very active. We're responding to more fires. I think we're more prepared right now for a large storm like a tornado or hurricane or a flood. And our blood drives are increasing. And that leads me to really the main reason I'm here, and that's to present a couple of awards. Back in June, we had our annual volunteer recognition banquet. And we, now we have, we serve eleven counties and Covington County being one of them. And we have, of course, five services in the Red Cross. We have disaster services, blood biomed services, the health and safety trainings. We have service to the armed forces and international. So we have awards for each one of those services. And I'm excited to announce that two of those awards are won by local volunteers here in Covington County. So I wanted to present those awards. The first one is our disaster services award. And when I first met this gentleman, he had never done a fire. He'd never gone to provide Red Cross services to somebody whose house had burned down. And now, less than a year later, he's actually done dozens. And he does such a terrific job at that. It's really amazing to watch him work and to see somebody who really thrives for helping people. That's the reason I think he gets out of the bed in the mornings, to help folks. So I would like to, right now, present the two thousand and fifteen disaster services volunteer of the year award to Mr. Kevin Kennedy. Thanks, Kevin. Before you leave, we also, our new structure has community volunteer leaders. Stay here for a second. And Kevin has actually taken on the role as our community volunteer leader for Covington County. So he works directly with me and the rest of the chapter, and that's a certificate for being community volunteer leader. Thanks, Ken Kennedy. And now, we also had our blood services award. And that also went to a volunteer here in Covington County. I first met this lady. She was kind of distraught that the blood drives had kind of petered out here in the area. And she was excited about getting them going again. So we got her name to the blood services folks, a new representative who's doing a great job. And they teamed up and now Blood Services is really doing a great job in Covington County. More blood drives, more blood collections, which saves lives. So this year, I would like to, I'm very excited to present this award. The two thousand and fifteen Blood Services Volunteer of the Year Award for South Alabama is Ms. Janice Castleberry.
She's been a longtime faithful worker. This is the appreciation of this.
Absolutely. Before you leave, I've also got a very special award for Ms. Janice. We also did service awards pens. So if you've been one, my son got his one-year pen. He's fourteen. He's been a volunteer for one year. Then they do five and they do ten. I would like to present Ms. Janice Castleberry with her fifty-year pen. Fifty years of volunteering for the Red Cross.
He's still a keeper until now, old, aren't you, man?
He's gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, she started, but she was two. And before I leave the podium, I would like to say that, again, things are going well. But these folks are a little overworked. So if you guys have any sources for new volunteers, whether it's a disaster action team member like Kevin or the response to fires, blood drive volunteers, people that work the desk here at our office, any of those kind of volunteers are needed here in Covington County. So please contact me or Kevin and we'll help you get those folks oriented and trained. Thanks again for all you do for us.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go back to item number two about the license for Cypress Landing RV park. We do not issue the license. We only make a recommendation to the ABC board whether to issue it, deny it, or take no action. So Ms. Sawal, do you have anything to say about the paperwork that's available?
No, they just brought everything in. Everything seems to be in order. It was, the gentleman was very concerned to making sure that he had everything as accurate as possible. Instead of anyone had any questions, and he wanted to invite everyone up to see his facility as well.
Any of the commissioners have any other thing to comment or whatever? Speak up a little, Ms. Sawal.
I believe that's on board of Mr. Turman's, but it's a new RV park that they opened up on Twenty-Nine North just before we get to the county line. Real neat looking place is all I can really know about.
Just, Mr. Meeks?
It's a store. They have like a general store for their campers and it would be sold there in the general store.
It's an off-premise license?
That's right.
Thank you for bringing that point out. Do I have a motion for action on this?
Make a motion, we accept.
We have a motion by Mr. Turman that we recommend that it be approved, second by Mr. Norathy. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed nay. Motion carried. At this time, we will consider a request for purchase of a vehicle for the CATS program. And I want to call on Ms. Crystal, she was Ms. Crystal Lee, but she got married on us about two weeks ago. So she's going to have to reintroduce herself.
What's the last name now?
Bonds.
Bond?
Yes, Bonds. Well, good morning and thank you for allowing me to present this new information. I am requesting the purchase of a new bus pending approval from ALDOT because of our bus having so much maintenance costs this year. Ms. Sawal gave you a handout. And on the last page were the bus maintenance. This was until May fifteenth when I did it. But for the bus number two, you can add twenty-nine hundred dollars for the cost of the new transmission. So now that puts that bus at a total four thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars of maintenance this year. The purchase of this new bus will be for this coming up two thousand and sixteen budget year. The price of the new bus ranges from forty-nine thousand to fifty-six thousand. ALDOT will pay eighty percent, which leaves the county the remaining twenty percent.
Let me ask you a question. The type of bus are you going to? The big van, a regular van or one of the others with a?
Just like we have now, except newer.
That has a handicap?
Yes. Because if we get one of those other buses that the drivers have to push up, then it'll end up bad because they'll hurt their backs or something having to push heavier individuals onto the ramp to get into the bus.
What's your anticipated date of delivery if we approve this?
Well, I still have to hear back from ALDOT, but they're thinking the beginning of the year. So January, February is coming up.
Beginning of the calendar year, not the physical year.
Yes.
Any other questions?
You going to have, probably when we get the new one, if we decide to do that, then you'll declare one of these surplus?
Yes. The oldest one. It's a two thousand and seven.
Right.
Ms. Sawal, when that, if it's declared surplus and sold, that money goes back to ALDOT, is that correct?
That is correct, since we're just paying our twenty percent, the eighty percent being theirs and that goes back to them.
I didn't want, I was thinking we were going to get a hundred dollars out of it. Any other comment? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve the purchase.
Do I have a second? Mr. Norathy? Any other comment? Mr. Turman, anything?
No, sir.
All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to call on Ms. Sawal to go through the procedure for the personnel review board. It's time for appointments.
That's right. We had three positions open. One was the employee representative that was elated by our employees. We recently held elections on that one. And Mr. James Longmire Senior received the most votes at thirty-one. We also had two other applicants for the other positions that were open. One was asking for reappointment. That was Ms. Virginia Bronner. And the other application we had was Tony Lee. He's a resident here in Indolusia that had applied for this other position. That's the only two applications that we had that y'all need to appoint.
On the one that's elected by the employees of the county, I believe you asked the sheriff's department to do that accounting for us because our law enforcement people are not county employees. They're state employees. We just pay the bills.
They're not considered as married employees, and it was in the bylaws of the board that they are the ones to tally those results.
We can act on all three of them at one time or separately?
I just make a motion we elect Mr. Longmire and the, Ms. Bronner and Mr. Lee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other question? All in favor of certifying Mr. Longmire as the elected representative and the appointment of the other two, say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously. The next item is nomination to the Board of Equalization. And Ms. Sawal, we've had some questions about who recommends who. And I think I went back over, we are to, hopefully that the cities do not make the same recommendations that we did there.
That's correct. They had requested that everyone request someone different, each organization. And you've got every city and the school board involved. And so it does become difficult trying to appoint someone. But the three names that were brought up for ours was Wallace Joe Bush, Kyle Gant, and Tony Lee for those positions. But this is, would be our nominations and it would not be necessarily guaranteed that they would be given that position on the board. This goes back to the Department of Revenue and they appoint.
Alabama Department of Revenue makes the appointments. We just make recommendations for nominations.
That's correct.
Tony Lee, that's the same Tony Lee that was just on the?
He's owned several rental houses in the area and newly retired gentleman, very active.
Do I have a motion that we submit these three nominations? Mr. Norathy, a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second that we submit these three individuals at nomination. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried. The next one is consider taking an ad in the Alabama High School and Junior High School Rodeo Association. I would like Ms. Sawal to, and that money would have to come through from the contingency fund. And what is the balance there now?
We are actually at this time over by sixty, eighty-five dollars and seventy cent in that fund on the contingency. So they had requested for us to take out an ad for the drill team program. They have an event on September the nineteenth and twentieth, and they were asking for a full-page ad of a hundred dollars.
But we do not have the money now.
We do not have the funds.
I would suggest that the commissioners do what they can individually on this.
I will, I think last year that we came up about the same thing and I'll take care of that myself.
So we will not? Do we need to have action to deny this, Ms. Sawal?
I believe that y'all would need to take formal actions.
Do I have a motion that we do not fund this sponsorship due to lack of funds?
I think due to lack of funds, we will deny it at this time.
Do I have a second? Mr. Turman, second? All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. Motion carried. A point I would like to bring up, this reminding of it. You know, we get requests throughout the year. What I think would be helpful to us that we, before we do our budget, that anyone who wishes to have, for us to help sponsor anything, they make that request before the budget so we can make sure that everything is considered. This is what Indolusia does. They have a letter and they go through those every year and depend on what they do. It's just something to think about because, you know, we had a request last time that we had to deny part of it, the park in Flaweller because of liking funding. We got like, but if we had everybody to get theirs in to start with, then maybe we could redistribute and maybe help everybody. So that's a program that Ms. Sawal has mentioned to me about us doing to help with the budgeting process. And we will try to get that plan out to y'all for consideration. And we will need to use media's help in publicizing this if we take that. At this time, we will go back up to the personnel action. I skipped that on purpose and y'all can give me a few lashes for that. But as you know, when we hired Ms. Sawal, we appointed a committee consisting of Mr. Ken Norathy and Carl Turman to review her performance at the end of six months and make a recommendation to the commission as far as additional compensation if necessary. If this comes in the form of a recommendation, it would only need a second for consideration. And I will call on Mr. Norathy to make the report.
Yes, we, you know, talked with several people and everybody seems to be real pleased with what Ms. Sawal's doing. We think she's doing a real good job. She's very attentive. She puts in extra hours. She's, I think, doing everything we've asked her to do. So I'm saying that I make a motion that we continue her on and with a, and give her a five thousand dollar raise. At, you know, for the year.
I'll second that motion.
Has a five thousand dollars to be considered as an annual salary? Not a five thousand this month?
No, no, I'm sorry. That's what I'm saying.
Just wanted to be clear about that, Mr. Norathy. So we have a motion. Do I, and do I have a second? Mr. Turman? That we increase Ms. Sawal's annual salary by five thousand dollars. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously. I would just like to say it's been a pleasure to work with her. It's been very helpful to sit down and discuss things and look at different alternatives. And she's been very good about researching, even though we have an county attorney, she's very good about researching the law to keep us all on track and we appreciate that.
I'd like to thank you all also. I enjoy working with you and I appreciate you all.
We'll try to do better so you can go home earlier, okay? At this time, item number eight, I will call on Ms. Harris to come forward and make this presentation. And she's going to read the whole report.
This is the report, so be ready. At this time, it's our hazard mitigation is planned, it's up for renewal. We have changed the plan. It's actually became a regional plan. So it made it quite thick. So I have sent this out to you. I've seen you sent that email to them so that you can look through the plan. But this is the hazard mitigation plan. It has been approved through the state EMA and through FEMA upon your approval of the resolution. And this plan has to be approved before we can receive mitigation funds. The mitigation funds is like when we have a disaster that comes through, there's a percentage that is used to mitigate, such as sirens and storm shelters and Darren uses it sometimes for road issues. So I'm just asking for a resolution to approve this plan.
Ms. Sawal, let me ask you a question. Do we have a resolution number?
We do. I actually have the copy for you to sign. Fifteen seven fifteen oh one. And if y'all approve it, I have this prepared.
You've heard the report and it's for sure that we would like to get funded if we have a disaster.
Exactly.
So do I have a motion that we adopt this resolution number fifteen oh seven fifteen oh one? We have a motion and second to adopt the resolution. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. We thank you very much for that. And you know, you cost me about four nights' sleep trying to read that two hundred and fifty pages. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on our county engineer, Mr. Darren Capps, to present the agreement for the Alabama Department of Transportation.
Yeah, on page twenty-eight in your handout, there's an agreement from the, with the state of Alabama and Covington County for the resurfacing of County Road Four from the Old Farm Road to State Road Fifty-Five, which is about seven point two miles. And the total cost of the project, including the E and I, is one point three million. And our part, our matching part would be two hundred and sixty thousand, which is eighty twenty max.
So the federal money is, funds is federal funds that we have received last year?
This is our annual amount that we get from the state, through the state, this federal money through the state. Throughout the, there's a little bit of twenty fourteen left and then current year, twenty fifteen, that we're in now. And a little bit of advancement of the sixteen, which we would normally get October the first, but I'd only liked three hundred and forty-three thousand to fund the project so we can get it done this year and the highway director grant us the advancement. So it's, you know, we have the money available.
And the county's portion of fund comes out of the bond issue that we did in two thousand and twelve?
Yeah, this was originally submitted for an aid trip, even though it wasn't funded. But we're just using our regular federal aid money, which is the same type of money as aid trip, is federal aid money.
And I believe you told me that in order to get this done because of the temperatures, in order to get it done now, you got to do it during the hot weather.
That's right. Because our surface treatment that we put down to try to seal the cracks from the old pavement has to be put out in the warm part of the year. You can't wait, you know, past, I think, October.
And the state would do all the letting, you know, the bid and all that, right?
That's right. All we do is send.
All we do is send money.
And then we do the inspection of the project and we do the estimates and submit to the state and the state pays the contractor.
Any questions? Do I have a motion that we approve this agreement?
I make a motion we approve this agreement.
Do I have a second? All in favor of the motion to approve this project, say aye. All opposed nay. There be none. Motion carried unanimously. That concludes all the items for consideration. And this time, we will hear comments from the board, if any.
Well, I do want to say one thing. Mr. Gershman, appreciate you being here. Whenever you announced the news media a while ago, you didn't say nothing.
I'm sorry about that. He was hiding behind the camera. I couldn't see it.
We don't leave nobody out, man. But appreciate what, all of you. Hey, we appreciate everybody coming and being here.
At this time, I'll call on our county attorney to make any comments.
I don't have any comments.
Does any of the other department heads have any comments? With that, before we adjourn, I will make the announcement. We'll be calling a special call meeting on the twenty-second of July at eight-thirty, hopefully to be able to take action on the maintenance contract, the airport re- uh, resolution, and budget amendments, and any other items that is deemed necessary in the call for the special meeting. And all of those items in the call can be considered at that meeting. So, uh, news media, that's your note, that's one of your notification that we will be meeting.
Eight-thirty?
But we will send an email out. Twenty-second of July at eight-thirty. That'd be a, a week from today. Any other comment? Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
So move. I make a motion we adjourn.
Would you stand up on that?
I'll second that. I'll second that, Mr. Terrence.
We stand adjourned.